Would like to address some...
Let's sit here.
You may, sure.
I'll be quick. I'm not on the agenda, so I'm gonna make an agenda for the next meeting to agenda, just wanted you guys to be aware of kind of the issue that we're going through. My wife and I are in the process of doing our first known here in town in Marshall Street. When public works came and set our water meter, we found out that there was no water to our lot. Now, previously, there had been a house ages ago, so we had a water box or a water connection, I'm not sure what you call it, in front of our property. So, we assumed, as well as public works, assumed that there was water to the lot. Come to find out, there's no, not only no water, but there's no lines that are in code around our house, so we're being asked to trench, I think somewhere about 300 feet, to bring water to our lot. It was going to cost several thousand dollars. I have a couple of issues with that. Number one, this is, our lot is well against city limits. If this was Georgetown, Steeplechase, Trail Ridge, anything like that, I would expect, you know, running into an issue like this, but one of the reasons that we picked a lot in town was so that we wouldn't have to deal with issues like this. My second issue is that there was previously water on our lot, and so, for some reason, we don't know, public works doesn't know, I think the city issued a stop service order on our line and capped it off and failed to record that, and so, you know, there was water, and now, for no fault of our own, there is none. So, we'll be in action to figure that. Mr. Baker's been very clear that he has a budget, and I can respect that. I have a budget too, although mine's not that big, but, you know, so I just want you guys to be aware of the issue, let you know that I will be on the next meeting to agenda.
Yes, sir, and I wonder, because I know that I sat here on it, we've had one meeting on this already.
Yes.
And we went away with some understanding, but it looks like we may need another meeting.
Yes.
And you could talk with Mr. Baker if you like, and see if we can set that up before the next council meeting, if that would help. I'll ask you at this point, if we have another meeting before the council meeting, do you intend to bring the council with you, or do you want another meeting like we had last time?
No, I'm really not interested in having another meeting with you guys. I'd like to bring it before the city council.
All right.
No, but...
Okay, okay. So, you're just gonna make an agenda?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay. And the next thing is, that public hearings are the next things, and the first one, item number five, is conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner agent of 14.320 acres of the property described as being a part of James McKinnon survey abstract number 77, being a part of the 43.976 acre tract of land conveyed by a warranty from Mont Hendricks, Joanne Dabich, David Chiff, pardon me, and Sandra Watkins to Felix Land Partners LP on November 29th, 2007, recorded in volume 4367, page 337, Official Public Records, Grayson County, Texas, to rezone a portion of the property named from the current zone, property from the current zoning of the single family one, to plan development. The property described above is located on the north side of Blassey Gate Avenue and south of Graywood Drive. I want to say a couple more things. We did start this meeting at 6:30, and I forgot to announce the time, everyone's watching, my watch closely. And I want to tell you a little bit about this, this is the Palladium project that we're talking about here, and the city council sent, or the city sent, a plan development document, actually a proposed ordinance to Palladium, describing what the council had decided they wanted. Now, they got it on short notice, frankly. They got it last Friday, and they had very little time to work with it, and that's kind of a problem. Now, I want to have this public hearing, because I think Palladium has some things that they would like to say, but I'm going to table, I'm gonna be, I'll be requested to table the action item that we have later, because they have not had time to work on, to look at, to consider closely on the things that are in the plan development document that we sent them. And so, if that's all fair statement, Mr. Johnson, if you want to make the presentation or...
Just first, just for... Second, Mayor. I'm Scott Johnson, I'm the senior vice president of American Construction Development. And, Mr. Mayor, Brian, we did receive a revised PD last Friday. A little, I have to say honestly, a little disappointed, not angry, but greatly disappointed. It'll be better, sir. We walked away from planning and zoning in early June with a perceived understanding that our development plans, as you see right here, with our construction materials, methodology, building size, building layout, increased parking requested by planning and zoning, was achieved with the mutual understanding that everything was acceptable. We received our PD last Friday that basically contradicted. We stated at our last council meeting that this development needs and will catch flow to be successful. It will need to be cash flowing, which we feel. Over the past year and a half, we've submitted our site numerous times for review, with never one mention that there is a road down Graywood that we discovered. Also, the expansion of Blassey Gate just in front of our site, that may have traveled. Now, on a land purchase, we bought additional land to provide a lot of way for Graywood's expansion and future additions, and we're happy to do. We also offered to the city that this land over here will be dedicated for future parks, or whatever the city needed, with the address in short note, a 15-year lease at a very minimal amount to be determined, with minimum, not talking less than $100,000 a year, at which, at the timeframe after our program requirements were met with the state, we would leave the land over to the city, pretty clear. So, we, I, our company, assume that would be the direction that would be accepted. We have PD delivered to us, and the roadway is in fact, I think, taken by the city. The estimated value of Graywood and Blassey Gate was estimated to be $480,000 to be escrowed for future work. Okay? This is only 132 unit development. It's not a massive subdivision, nor is it a subdivision on it. 132 unit development, you can't support a $480,000 road cost. Now, we, this development is not even needed. We will be used. Okay? With that, we also add another requirement that we thought we got an understanding on, and I don't mean to be disrespectful to you all, that we understood that our, the aesthetics of our site and our buildings, having a building material ratio of, you know, roughly 70% commercial grade of three coat stuff, would balance in 30% by everything stuck, which kind of doesn't kind of does, means the requirement that they manage to fully design. What that means is very track, whether it's Plano or Frisco or Van Alstine. The city was required to deal with an 80% masonry with a 20% stuck. This goes back to my comment, this moment ago, about the development needing to catch flow. So, I have a fiduciary responsibility to my principles, that our development needs to catch flow when we cough before the company being a success. And it's not just a success for Palladium. It's a success for Van Alstine, like we stated previously. We want this to be a document that you can be proud to live in, proud to be in your city, proud to move your parents into it, to feel so fit, proud for residents to live in, bring their friend, those who look around them. So, having some, we're having some problems. We've got some other finer technicalities that are being dictated. Roof pitch, which, I'll probably clearly explain in the last meeting, but the roof pitch for the three-story structure, which is the main house, the main residence, is going to have a four-trough pitch. That's standard for the design, they're standard for the architecture stuff. The cottages will have a six-twelve pitch. We increased that from initially a four-twelve pitch, to appease the city's request. The city came back and said we'd like a nine-twelve pitch on cottages, and a six-twelve pitch on the main stuff. I don't think it's been considered as a six-twelve pitch, which puts hold the city height requirements by local meeting, which are conflict with our own, our own family work. So, now, this makes it hard, but it's the fact that if we are forced to do all this for 132 unit development, this development will not be done. Okay? If we had known about this road a year and a half ago, if we had known about the road before we redid our application this year, it would have been a complete disaster. Okay? Think of, keep in mind, it's 132 units, affordable for the residents to live in. That money that someone is forced to put this road in, would be taken away from the property itself and put into a road. So, the amenities would be reduced, the quality of construction would be minimized, all the really cool features that are going to give a development would all be stripped down to support, and roads not there now might not be needed for twice the time. And with that, we would, we would pull our application. I do not want to be hard, because the road has never been in any discussions, but the right of way that they're providing for a future improvement. So, any questions or comments, I would greatly appreciate. Brian asked other comments about the application itself, with the ramifications that have applied to it.
Right, and I'll be, I'll be very brief, but I do want to just address some of the things that Scott talked about. You know, we have been working with the city for a year and a half, and I came in just really off this patch here, so I don't know the district that they come, it's kind of a work, right, I've heard it, I wasn't there. And I know that we're all excited about this development, we want to bring this development, and we did, and we still have to do something that is a win for the city, and it's got to do something that's responsible for us as well. We found out on Friday, not only that the Blassey Gate, just this past Friday, not only that Graywood Drive, but also the improvements to Blassey Gate, we got an estimate on that yesterday, as Scott said, that's $480,000, and there is, there just is no way to absorb that at this 11th hour in the game. We have, I want to speak to the program, TDHC program, very briefly. When we submitted our application to the state, in part of that process, we hired a third-party engineer, and the state hires us to do this, and that third-party engineer does what's called a feasibility study, and I think the city talked with, I know that, we hired an engineer, that engineer reached out to the city, reached out to city engineers, and that, the purpose of what they do is they put together a report, that that third-party turns into the state of Texas, and inside that report, it lists out, lists out all the requirements that the city is going to require of us. There's no mention of any road, other than dedication, that there's no mention of any road improvements in that. And so, what we did in our application to the state of Texas is we certified to what the costs are. There, it really damages and really puts us at risk, even if we could afford, if we cannot afford, half a million dollar hit. I mean, there's, I don't know that anybody could afford a half a million dollar hit, and if you're going to buy a house, and somebody said, hey, by the way, you're for that extra half a million dollar deal, the closing payment, you can't do it, I mean, it's just not possible to do it. On top of that, it would put us at superior risk if we went back to the state of Texas and said, we need to change the, then get certified. Remember, this is a competitive process. We are the very top of the region, and that means we have the largest target on our head. And so, anytime we go back to the state, then it would really put us, see, we're definitely at risk. The other side of that is, the other piece of that is, this is really our last chance to be able to get this done with the city. The state of Texas, and the way, the way they do their rules, is that Van Alstine right now, this year and last year, was in a position to be able to capitalize on these tax credits. Last year, with any time the state of Texas gets too many senior deals done, they limit it by, through their rules. Last year, they, they put a moratorium on all senior deals, all through Houston and the whole, it's called Region Six, but everything in South, you know, the Gulf Coast area, and they said, no senior deals to get done there. This year, a majority of the deals that are getting funded are senior deals in Region Three. In addition to that, there's been a significant lobby effort to the state of Texas by the city of Fort Worth in particular, and a few others, that if you only remember the revival, looking for revitalization plan that we did, we beat the city of Fort Worth. They did not like that, not just us, you know, several other applications beat them as well. So, they've been lobbying to the state of Texas, and it's very, they don't know if it's going to happen, but it's very possible what they're trying to get happen, is the state of Texas to rewrite the rules about revitalization, so that cities, larger cities, would be more competitive than smaller ones. And so, the reality is, it's, it's not just, it's likely that this is our last opportunity to get this done. We want to get it done. We've got a plan where we think we can get it done. And I really don't want to address this, you know, the conservatives are more than I do, but that significant cost that we just can't afford, and we want to go, we want to get past it, we want to move forward to get this done, but that's something that we have, I mean, we just don't have the ability.
One thing I don't want to do, this, this argument right now, or creating an argument right now, because things are still being negotiated, there is still time for negotiation, but I'm not going to try to rebut anything that they said. However, I want to encourage everyone who's interested, to contact the council with any thoughts that you have on the project, and if there are specific questions, there are not just argumentative, but specific questions about different things, questions you may have about this, I can try to answer those, or Mr. Johnson can try to answer, or Mr. Cohen. So, if you want to address any specific questions to any of us, this would be a time, this is a time for public comment. Does anyone have any specific questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Swift?
That's a good question. This, Scott's question. What is the estimated delta expectation for property taxes if this was to happen? Would it bring to the table the city?
I can, I can address that.
I don't know, I didn't, sorry, I asked him, because I don't...
No, that's, that's good, because I do want to, I do want to mention the benefit that we plan, our development does, plan to bring to the city, and council has seen this, and we were all on the same page of this. Estimated property...
Sir, Mr. Cohen, I'm sorry, I don't want to argue with the document, we're on the same page about what, but he asked me, there is some question that you have to answer.
Okay. Property taxes, estimated $40,000 a year to the city, $106,000 to the school district, over 10 years, that's about 1.5 million of an effect for the city's...
Any other questions? Our senior chairman, Mr. Swift?
Mayor, it might help the citizens to be able to know questions to ask, or things they want to talk to you about, if they maybe just had a general develop, just a one-minute development, 101 explanations, that they could fit everything into context, if you think that would be appropriate, not as a rebuttal, but just as a...
Okay, well, I can, I can tell, I think the differences have spelled out, but I can reiterate those, or maybe, maybe clear them up, but the big differences that the council has with Palladium right now are the cost of the roads, because, well, the cost of the roads, we need the roads developed, the city doesn't feel that we're in a position to do that by ourselves. There are concerns about the amount of stucco, because there are concerns about, about how good of construction material stucco is here, here in Texas. And we've received assurances from Palladium that it's good material, but there's, there's some ar, or, of course, uncertainty. And the other thing is the roof pitches, the city has a, has a futuristic plan of what we, what we expect in roof pitches, just aesthetically, and these are less than that, and so, those are the big three differences, roof pitches, the amount of the stucco, and we build the roads. And those are things that are still being negotiated, as far as I know, the road.
Does the road have to be built right now, or is there a timeframe on, or is this something that you're like?
The city, the city would like the road built because, for one thing, Graywood needs to be extended. Now, there's an option of putting some money in escrow, still a lot of money, but, but there's an option of rather than building the road, putting money in escrow to build later, or, 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 in the construction process. But, one difficulty we have is that there's only one entrance/exit area there, and we need to buy another, we need to buy another, we need on Graywood, or for, for safety purposes. So, that's, that's the city's concern about building Graywood and about that additional entrance/exit complex.
We built a stucco home in Austin, actually, so rental park, and today, it's still in very good shape. I don't know.
That's, that's good. If that's your experience, I would encourage you to get in touch with the councilman and let them know about your experience. But, but my, my answer would still be the same, there's concern about that much stucco.
Well, we have the stucco. The way they did the stucco, it was that covered the house with a wire mesh, and then we put the stucco on.
Well, I've seen that done in New Mexico and in area places, but it's not, it's not what works in Texas with humidity, and it's not what Palladium wants to do. They have another quality of stucco that they're proposing, but the kind of stucco that you see would not work well here, human environment. Are there any other questions at this time?
Just on, not specifically about this road, but just for development in general, the subdivision ordinance has a provision where developers should pay their share for new roads, and the ordinance has not been amended since 2002, so that's at least been on the books for that long. So, the choice is, the current citizens pay the cost of that through their taxes, or new development coming in pays that cost under the existing ordinance. The, and impact fees are the same way, they're fees collected on new development to help pay for that infrastructure. And so, those, the city has had those for a long time, they're not new. I've, I've never met a developer that wasn't familiar with those things, and, you know, find out what those are for each city when they're, when they're developing, and so, but those, that's the kind of general principle for why cities have those things, if, you know, who's going to pay for what, developers versus the citizens.
Yeah, I think we need to address that. If I could add to that, I mean, there is a difference in opinion as to whether or not this is a subdivision. Now, it's, the city's contention is that it's 14-plus acres, carved out of 40, and also, our subdivision ordinance says that subdividers and developers are, those are sent in there. And so, under our ordinance, as it's written, we're saying that, that this is a subdivision. However, I think that you can answer this better than we could, I think that because you're not planning to cut up the 14-plus acres any further, you're not planning to subdivide it further, your contention is that you're not subdividing. We're not subdividing the road, so...
Also, maybe also, we're, we need to apply by the subdivision that was written today, but also, we're to apply by, and it, now, it may be altered, and, so, it's, it's not what it is today, it's what you all are working on right now, with subdivision work that you're trying to promote. We may be going to something that don't even know in one year's time. I think that's unfair.
Something I don't argue, yeah, something else that, that logic, or she, whether we should grant law, the subdivision ordinance, whether we should apply, that's a clear argument. Any other questions? Then, this, this will be the end, if there are no more, then this will be the end of the discussion for tonight on the Palladium project, and I'm glad that you came to present your side, and, but there will be no action taken, because I'm being asked, both to table associate, not work on, so that we can move, we can still, we can... Yeah, sure, all right. All right. Well, yes, sir, thank you. I'll move on then to item number six, which is conduct a public hearing regarding the 2014 annual drinking water quality report, and is quite as serious to discuss that.
Each year, we're required to submit a CCR to all the general public. This year, we submitted, we had two violations, both of them were written violations, not written violations, but violations, but they were due to record keeping. One, we had changed a personnel who had done the record keeping, he left and went to another city. Then, the second one was, we sent in our lead report certified, never received a copy back, so they submitted us a violation for that, failed to get test results back to the residents who participated in the lead. The city's working diligent to try to make sure the record keeping is submitted. Every piece of paper we sent to TCQ now is sent certified with signature. Anybody have any questions about the, 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 how was that?
I think I have eight questions for Mr. White, for this one, and I think I'm supposed to ask the second and the third time, so for my second call, any questions for Mr. White? I see nine. Third call, any questions for Mr. White, regarding this stuff, and then the fourth, fourth ring call. I see them. Thank you, sir. Move on to the seventh item, conduct a public hearing regarding the Van Alstine Community Center Development Projects, of the following. $12,260 to Dorset Field Memorial Park, $2,756 to North Park, $46,660 to Forest of Wiltmore Park, and $4,000 to Wilson McKinnon Park or Grand Tour, other $65,676. Are there, are there any questions about, about what improvements are the roads... I should ask the second item. Now, does anyone want to make a presentation, or would you want to see if there are questions? I hope it's not missing a lot.
Right, that we get an hour later.
Well, now, there's, here is, pardon me, it's having executive session, we said, Martin, for, uh- Yeah, that's, that's a different topic, so.
If you're arguing with what the city had come to, what, right, she can do that, she won't have comments, that's okay, so.
All right, well, if you think you have a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Matt Simon. As you know, it's budget time, so last Thursday, my Van Austin Community Development Corporation met to discuss the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen budget. For those of you that don't know what Van Austin Community Development Corporation, what we do, we do quality of life projects for parks, the recent work done on the museum, we're hoping that the railcars will get fixed, and that comes from sales tax funds, so when you go to the store and buy your bread, a percentage of that's going to go to C D C. Anyway, we invited the Parks Board to make their presentation of what they would, you know, their wish list for next year, and what they brought to us was, as you mentioned, for the Dorothy Fielder Park, the park that's over by City Hall where the gazebo is, they have projects amounting to twelve thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, that includes railing for the gazebo, the maintenance of the fountain, landscaping, and a little bit of electrical. For North Park, which is located on Highway Five, at the old football field, they're requesting a new merry-go-round. The other one didn't meet safety standards, so they had it removed, and that's going to be like two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. At Forest Smart Park, they're requesting a new playground, swing set, rubber mulch for the playground area, bleachers, shade, so when you go to baseball games and football games, you don't get burned by the sun, and there's a bridge there, and they have requested to get a plaque for that, so the cost of that was forty-six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. For Eastfield, and I believe that's the McKenney Park, and they're wanting to do a surface expanded lot, and that's four thousand, so that's a grand total of sixty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Our board considered it, and they're going to come back to City Council and, on our budget, request eighty thousand dollars. I'm working with the Parks Board President, Stacy Browning, and she and I are going to take a look at grants and maybe try to offset that, kind of fill in that gap. So, that's what, that's what this is about. And if y'all have any questions about the particular parks, the stuff that I've talked about, Stacy Browning is here to answer any questions that you have.
Was there any thought given to the other bridge, the one that goes between the ball field and the I S U, the one that has the holes in it?
Yes, yes, we have discussed that one, and Mark is my meeting.
Okay, so, there's, if everybody's not familiar, in Forest Smart, there's two bridges, there's kind of the big one that goes to the elementary school, and there's a smaller one that goes to the restroom. The smaller one has material, it's right at, uh, Wired, we're targeting October to get that repaired, I got volunteers all set up for that, to repair those holes in that one. The plaque for the other bridge, because it's older, we'd like to make it a storied artifact, so that it secures that, and then the next thing, once that's done, then we'd like to resurface that. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
More questions? I'll ask the second time, for any question. And I'll ask the third time, for any questions. Third call. Thank you. And item number nine, sorry, item number eight, conduct a public hearing regarding adoption of the ordinance adopting a new subdivision ordinance, which includes, but is not limited to, general provision, including the adoption of a city design manual, procedures for plat approval, including administrative plats, preliminary plats, final plats, reef plats, miscellaneous plats, and abandonments in land development districts, design and construction standards, proportionment and legal provisions, including penalty severability and review clauses, and effective date in adopting the city's design manual. Does anyone have questions about that? That's quite a, that's quite a sentence there. And I'll read that, and if anyone needs to parse that out, or, does anyone want to respond? Are there any questions regarding, or comments regarding the adoption of the new subdivision ordinance? And second call, any questions regarding adoption of the subdivision, and third call. I see nine, and move on. The ninth item is approval of minutes from June nine, okay, now, these are items for consideration, so we're past the public hearing, and item number nine is an item of consideration, past approval of minutes from July nine, twenty fifteen, ready to, uh, June nine, I'm sorry, June nine, twenty fifteen, ready to, and, so, do, Mr. Blake, if you have any amendments, edits?
No.
Questions? Do I have a motion?
Well, they can motion to amend this.
You have a second? You have a second, Mr. Jaska, and all in favor? Please unanimous, and move on to item ten. Your presentation from Texoma Council of Governments, otherwise known as T C O, the area, area agency, their agency, pardon, T C O's area agency on A G, represent.
Thank you. We did kind of confuse, don't get me wrong, in the way that Robles off, I'm sorry, don't worry about that. I'm Judy Connor, I'm from T C O, area agency on A G, this is Virginia Rhodes, she's also from area agency on A G, but we manage different programs. And what we're doing is going around to different city councils, and we want to tell people, the residents, of the free services that we have available to anyone. Now, my programs are sixty and over, we have, everything we have is free services to you, and we have wheels on wheels, home delivered meals, and that's for homebound people, we cover the Van Austin area, and referrals can be made to, as a matter of fact, we have, we brought plenty of these source books, these are free of charge, we leave them on the back table, but it has the referral number from the area agency on A G, and you just have to call that number, it's something we're interested in, having home delivered meals, and we get all the other information, the case manager will come down and visit, and get those started as quickly as we can. Another thing that we have are the caregiver services, we have support groups for all centers, parks, and grandparents who are raising the grandchildren. Again, these are our free services, and we do have basic care available, it is temporary and it's limited, but it does give the caregiver a glory, so that that twenty-four-seven caregiving is eased somewhat, so we can call about that. And we also have benefits counseling that's free of charge. If anyone has ever tried to understand that care, many pain regulations, I mean, that's not easy, it's not simple, and even the people who work in it have to stay on top of the new rules and the regulations, so we have free counseling for you to come in and talk one-on-one to a benefits counselor, and get all of your Medicare questions answered, even help you to find extra money out there that can come in to you monthly if you're eligible, they can determine that in the office if you're eligible. So, please, take a, take a look at the book, see what's in it, free resources for you, and also local resources, so we hope you give us a call. Thank you.
And in the interest of state, my name is Virginia Rhodes, and I'm the program manager for Senior Core, which is our senior volunteer program, and we basically focus on people age fifty-five and over who have decided that they want to serve, and we actually partner those people with the people in the agencies that need the service. So, our focus is on volunteerism, we have two programs within Senior Core, which is the foster grandparent program, the foster grandparent program, and the retired senior volunteer program, and the age limit is fifty-five and older. The foster grandparent program, the focus is within the schools and daycares and after-student programs, and it focuses on at-risk and kids who need special help, maybe with homework or reading or whatever it is, maybe just moral support, because in this day and time, everybody's working, that has to work, and a lot of times, you know, there's a lot of single parents, and whatever issues that, whether a kid is often neglected, not intentionally, but it happens, and so, these grandparents will, will help them in class and help them be successful adults, and then we, also, with that program, there's a small segment that is given to help with brain costs, because there is a fifteen-hour minimum, weekly requirement for a volunteer to participate in that program, and we also pay mileage in addition to that. Then, we, our other program is the retired senior volunteer program, R S V P, which it's a little, it's a lot more flexible, there's only a minimum of one-hour fund requirement, and so, you can do an hour, you can do more than an hour, but we're reaching out for, you know, different agencies, or whether they can give you a valley to try to help increase your volunteer base if you need that, or, or if there's people that want to volunteer, we'll help find places for you to be able to volunteer. What we provide is support and encouragement, recognition, we have a Hallmark grant that we get, like this N T E products from Hallmark Agency, and we help give that, we give that, those products to our agencies or to our volunteers, because with teachers, you know, there's a lot of arts impact things, and they could, you know, helps with the place cuts, things like that, we can provide those free, as they're given to us, but we also provide a no-cost liability insurance to our volunteers for those who are too fun and doing while they, while they serve, if they were injured, that no cost to them, if, if they can go ahead and, of course, file their insurance, and if there's anything left over, our insurance will pay for it, and if there was an individual who did not have insurance, our insurance would still pay for it. So, we are here to serve, we're here for low volunteer incentive, and know if anybody or any agencies are interested, as Judy stated, we believe in our resource, books there, that has all of our contact information, I have a couple more, so, and thank you for discussing.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Now, in Texoma Council of Governments, your main office is in Sherman, do you have, now, I know the wheels on wheels, those come out of our senior center here, so probably have branches that you have.
There are branches all over the three counties, and the referrals, the ones that are delivering here, the referrals go through T C O or through the wheels on wheels, we work closely, both of us are, we actually contracted the wheels on wheels of Texoma to provide those meals to this area, so, we have actually the paperwork and the case manager comes out of our office, and our, our main office is on Gallagher Drive, and we do have an outreach office in Cook County and then one in Fannin, but we try all over Bracston County, well, all over the three counties, but checking on people that are asking for referrals in different areas, we check those out to see where we can help them, all they have to do is call our office.
And, and so, the numbers, now, there may be some from other counties, but primarily the numbers that you listed inside your booklet are local numbers, just show me.
Yes, sir, all of the names and the numbers for the area agency on A G, right here in the front, and go forward, so you can.
Thank you so much, your presentation, and thanks for leaving. Now, the next item, item eleven, is, it's, it's on the agenda, but it's, it's really something that's been considered in the budget process for the, for the C D C, and so, we're just going to skip over that, because it's going to be taken care of in another, item number twelve is the action item on the Belaying, uh, Belaying Project, and since there's more negotiation to be done on that, I'm going to ask for a recommendation or a motion actually to table this item until the next count, the next regular council meeting. August eleventh, at six thirty. I'll make a note, you have to table item twelve to the next regular session. Do I have a second? And Mr. Blake has a second. All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Item thirteen, oh, now, this, I, this has to do with adopting, adopting the ordinance and, and the city design manual, and I think, I'm, we're asking to table this so that we can talk this over with our city chairman, second.
Yes, sir, thank you, ma'am.
So, I guess I need a, pardon, I guess we need a motion to table this one. And motion. Mr. Jaska makes the, makes the motion, and a second. Mr. Blake makes a second, all in favor? All right, it is unanimous. Item number fourteen, considers taking the action necessary regarding passage of ordinance establishing a no-truck zone on Kelly Lane from St. John's Drive south to Dallas, and the, the items, do we have any questions in this session? This has been discussed, thank you, any questions, Sergeant Miller can answer, are there any questions? I have a question. So, regarding the passage of the no-truck zone ordinance on Kelly Lane, do I have a motion? Something asked, Mr. Jaska has made a motion, I have a second. Kelly has said, all in favor? All right. I want, I want to make a mention of exactly what we're saying, we're doing, so are we limiting it by size of truck?
Yes, sir, we took into accounts all of the comments and discussion that the council had previously, including exploring whether the length could be the standard, instead of having the weight of the vehicles be the standard, and after exploring that, we've learned a couple of things about the length. One is, you know, for the officers to be able to pull someone over, they, they have that, you know, reasonable cause to do that, and whether something is precisely longer than the minimum length or not, they may not always be able to tell that by eyeballing it, however, if you base it on weight, before they initiate any traffic stop, they can run the tag on the vehicle, and that will tell them whether the, what the weight of the vehicle is, so they can know whether they can lawfully pull the vehicle over or not before initiating a stop, so it eliminates the risk of an unlawful stop, that, doing it by length might, you know, just create that risk. The other thing is, we check the uniform manual on traffic control devices, because it's always advisable that traffic control signs match signs that are in that manual, and there are no signs with length restrictions, they're all related to weight restrictions, and so, those are a couple of reasons that you're seeing- And so those are a couple of reasons that you're seeing weight still instead of the length. What we did do though is we changed the way, you'll notice this a lot more, the weight that is in there now is the weight that's requires the driver to have a C D L license, which is a commercial driver's license. So it's basically will, will be the semi-tractors and other vehicles that are required to have that C D L license. Those are the vehicles where their weights are going to come up when they run the tags and it makes it a lot easier for your law enforcement officers to be able to, to enforce the, the ordinance.
So will a cement truck? Be a yes or no? Any ideas?
It, it depends on what the rest, the size of it and what the registered weight is.
How it's registered, yes, sir.
Okay. I think the problem we have is related to the length of a vehicle trying to get around the corner. Is that going to be handled in any way, shape or form in this or? And that's our initial problem we've got to fix is people driving over people's yards turning corners.
There's, there's not a way to do that to ensure that every time an officer pulls someone over, that they know for certain that the vehicle is too long and they have cause for pulling that vehicle over. They, they, they just can't tell without physically measuring. When they run the tags, the length of the vehicle is not a measurement that is provided back, but the weight is.
My assumption was that if those heavier trucks are typically going to be your longer, more challenging vehicles to move across those streets, would that be accurate?
I, I think a lot of the vehicles that require a commercial driver's license are going to be longer. You can only get so much weight per foot, you know, in, in a vehicle. But, you know, your, your semi-trailers, now there are personal, you know, recreational vehicles. There are vehicles that are long that do not require a commercial driver's license. But it's a safe way to ensure that the officer you're doing lawful stops.
Oh, that's what I assumed. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one question for you, Sergeant. After your review of this ordinance, do you see any problems with enforcement or is this something you're going to be able to enforce?
Yeah, this, the way it's worded, it'd be the safest way for us, most convenient for, for the people, be the easiest way to determine if they're violating. Like I said, we, to look at a vehicle, oh yeah, that, that meets or doesn't meet the required length would be, I could see us running into some problems doing it that way. This is just cut and dry. It's simple. It's, the weight's listed, the weight's listed on the, on the vehicle return. It's either yes or no without even being discussed.
Most basic things. You have to have a lawful, according to the criminal code, you have to have a reasonable suspicion to even stop a vehicle.
Yes, and you can't just stop them. Now, you get into, you know, the state troopers that, you know, do commercial motor vehicles, that it's different for them to operate under some different rules as far as, as our, our city. You know, this is, this is the best, that's the way, the safest way.
They have a right to inspect anything, state troopers, but it's not the same.
No, sir. Yeah, trooper, that's commercial motor vehicle, they see it, you know, commercial motor vehicle going down the road, they can pull, pull motor, just do an inspection or they don't, they can be violating the laws and get stopped from the commercial side of things. But we don't have that, that route.
You see, you don't think that, and so the way this, you don't think you're going to have problems with intentions? You don't think there's going to be any unlawful intentions?
No, sir. As long as there's, you know, the proper signage is placed and it's placed where people, you know, can see it and it's, you know, obvious that it's, that it's there, I don't see any disgust.
Thank you, sir. Does the 26,000 pounds is, is that the maximum weight that it can have? That's the loaded weight of it?
That is, that's 26, it's actually 26,001 pounds in the transportation code. If you weigh that much as an, as just the rig, not the trailer, in your commercial motor vehicle, the trailer I believe is 10,000 pounds. But if you're just the rig itself and you're pulling a trailer, then you're obviously going to be over, over that.
Okay, if, okay, if it's a dump truck, let's say, does that mean that it's empty? It, it can weigh less than 26,000 pounds?
It's really going to depend on what size dump truck, you know, because you have them.
On the dump truck, I mean, the number you're going to get off the tag, is it going to tell you the maximum weight this can be or the, or the, or the weight it was, was when it was emptied in the first measure?
If it's a commercial motor vehicle, it's going to tell you, it's, it's registered at the weight of 26,001 pounds. So whether it's 26,001 or 50,000, if it's, as long as it's registered 26,001 pounds and it'll, it'll be in violation of this ordinance, how, how. Is that clear?
I totally agree with that. Any further questions? I have a motion regarding the passage of this no truck. Go on, sorry. The motion is made and seconded. So all in favor? Is unanimous? To move on to item 15, consider and take any action necessary regarding authorizing the mayor to cast a vote for director or director to the Red River Ground Water Conservation District. And that has been Mr. Mark Paterson, representing Southside, now along. May I have a motion that you would allow me to cast that vote? I make a motion. Ms. Kelly is second. You're all in favor? Should I assume, sir?
Yeah.
All right. Next, now we have, we have an executive session set up for this evening and I'll read the items in those, that executive session, but prior to that, before they go through our departmental reports in case anyone's interested, because I'm not sure if you will want to stick around with the executive session because it is, it'll be the last item in the executive session, the results will be the last thing that we do tonight. So I don't know if anyone wants to stay for that or not, but so departmental reports. And Sergeant Miller?
No, sir.
I don't know if you guys have noticed, part of our department out last week, we had a wheelchair ramp in one of our citizens for community health program. All I think I've got is contract posted car on Graywood, Giants Club this week. He's out shooting a grave, he's hurt right now. What truck is that?
A lot of people have it. And Ms. Kim?
Yes, I just wanted to come about to you represent the month of June. Library is currently about halfway through our summer program, so I expect our, our June numbers to increase even more. I'm going to list the, the numbers for June as well as May so you can understand by comparison how incredibly busy that has been. Our children's programs last month are for the month of May, had a total of 155 children and children and adults. This month, or for the month of June, we have 521, which is an increase of 366. Our door count last month, or excuse me, for the month of May was 1,871. This month for the month of June is 2,583, which is an increase of 712. I suspected our door counter might be malfunctioning and so I checked our circulation and it's a completely separate system house and no, I believe our door count can be correct actually. Our circulation for May was 1,798 while at, for June was 3,304. This is almost doubling our circulation for that month of this month. Everybody's getting a new library card, you know, 46 from the May and 81 for the month of June. Without our help from our, our volunteers, this really is a community effort in a way that, you know, our library staff would be able to have handled it as well as we have. And I'd like to publicly recognize all the library staff because the workload's been tremendous. In the month of May, we had 27 volunteer hours that I've made. For the month of June, we have 58,000. Our volunteers went from eight from the month of May to 16, there's something that helped us. I would also like to say a public thank you to Mr. Jerry Ballard, who isn't here. He helped us with our sprinkles system, we helped get sprinkles system mapped out as well as repair the sprinkles system so that the water's in the water, it's been also beautiful and had its for us. A lot of people are donating. We usually make a book run and we, Mr. Ballard comes and we use a pickup truck and make the run out to our storage facility. We usually go once every couple of months. As of today, we will have to make a third run, three runs in one month until they're just coming in on crazy. This is past Saturday, if you do now, you'd say we have it completed, our fly garden is on the north end of the library, Gacy Cooper Street. Keep it also beautiful and lots of volunteers came out just this past Saturday morning and from weeks and months actually, activity of work from friends of the library, keep it also beautiful, myself, since the fruition of a lot of people working. Again, people helped us tremendously. Ken Stokes of Stone Ranch donated and gave us a very generous discount on compost as well as on the three beautiful stones, big rocks that are in the third fly garden that make it even more interesting and appealing. Mr. James Bligh, he's seen a silver slide where the garden is now planted. Merely Plumbing donated parts and laborers to install faucet at the back of the library so we can keep the fly garden in water. And this afternoon to help solve our water problem, purchased a zooker bench that will take care of the watering problem so that it's solved. Despite the workload, the library staff are continuing to work to streamline and restructure our collection and invite everybody to come by to see the changes that we made, visit the new, visit the new garden and check out our programs. Because of our overwhelming attendance for our Monday programs, we are using, I want everybody to help us to get the works. Monday programs will now be held in the community center, 10:30 same start time, but every Monday 10:30 for the remainder of our summer programs will be different.
Busy library, we have three members. So I think that's all. I'm going to read the items that are listed for this, for the executive session. It's all under item 16, for the record, I'm going to read all of these. 16A convene into executive session pursuant to section 551.071 in parentheses consultation with city attorney regarding palladium USA senior housing plan development ordinance proceeding, procedure fulfilling. Oh, all right, okay. Item B, convene into executive session pursuant to section 551.074 in parentheses personnel matters, conduct interviews and deliberate the appointment of a public officer, specifically a city council member to fill the vacancy created by the forfeiture of Larry. That's about before I'm going to say it, I'd say. Item C, convene into executive session pursuant to section 551.072 in parentheses real property regarding the purchase, lease and value of real property located at Fort Dear Industrial Park. Item D, convene into executive session pursuant to section 551.074 in parentheses personnel matters for annual evaluation of the city manager. Again, once those are done, we convene in open session. Oh, okay, I was supposed to be, right? One portion is, first thing I should have read is, in accordance with chapter 551 in Texas Government Code in parentheses open meetings law, the city council may meet in a closed executive session pursuant to municipal laws. And those laws I mentioned when I read items 18C. And so the time is 7:37 and we're going to adjourn the public portion, the items consideration and we will convene in an executive session in five minutes, that would be 7:43.
All as possible.
So we adjourn the executive session at 9:12 PM and we are going to reconvene the open session at 9:15 PM. And I'll go through these items. Item 16A was, we convene in order to have a consultation with, with our city attorney regarding palladium, USA senior housing center, land development. And there was no action taken. And item B was to convene an executive session pursuant to, well, personnel matter, section 551.074 personnel matter, conduct interviews and deliberate the appointment of a public officer, specifically a city council member, a city council member to fill the vacancy created by the forfeiture of Larry. And this time, we need to try to take a vote. I'm going to ask for a nomination, nomination.
I'll make a nomination for Nancy.
And do I have a second on that nomination?
I'll second.
Mr. Jasper? All right, all in favor of Nancy Ware, who counts as a place one? We have two votes for, any votes against? We have one vote against. So we do not have a forum and we don't have majority vote for the.
It does take three votes for an appointment mayor.
Takes three more. And there's no time, so I, I have no ability to vote, so we won't go further on that. And I, I suppose we have to reset that again for, for next month.
Yes, sir.
Another agenda item with another executive session.
Will it be just with the same thing, same people? Or do they have more candidates?
Well, I think, I think that could be an agenda item, I suppose, if you want to submit an agenda item on, on taking more nominations. We, we had said a guideline, what we wanted to go earlier, we wanted to go with the application process and we set a deadline. But if you want to submit an agenda item, that can be rediscussed.
That just maybe has to be two months, so. I, I would like to make a motion, then we go ahead and, and go on for the November ballot.
We have a motion to place one, place one seat on the November ballot. Do I have a second?
You're all second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor, putting on the November ballot? It's unanimous? And so we'll be setting a November election.
We, we can bring a resolution on next month's agenda, formally calling an election for you to take action on.
Do we need to do anything further? All right, we're done with that item. And convene an executive session pursuant to section 551.074 personnel matters for annual evaluation of the city manager. And there's, there's no, there's no action taken, no more action taken on that item. And so. All right, convene into an executive session pursuant to section 551.072 real property regarding the purchase, lease and value of real property located at Fort Dear Industrial Park. And that was for discussion. There's no action taken. As far as the federal, I think the change man, the motion, city manager.
You never got a city manager?
Mayor Council, we do have, we received a special permit for the vacation by school. Shut down, shut down the roadway, private, Sherman.
Shut down, shut down the roadway, private, Sherman and Preston for Jilbert. Yesterday, it's Methodist Church and they're going to park them in church, First Christian Church, vacation Bible school this year. They'll be, the end of this month, we'll be pushing out those dates, help promote it. But the main thing is, it was concerned that the county wasn't going to have the roadway by the end or that it would be going down at the same time. And talking to Commissioner Whitmire, trying to shoot down the... Everybody at work. Trying to shoot down the tar or the rock and asphalt. It's not asphalt, it's just, so...
What's that?
Whatever it's called. They're finishing out, they're going to finish out the surface, the top surface. Going to finish out the top surface, going to be doing that this week and next week, so should not interfere with vacation Bible school. So that's the main thing was, just letting them know, you know, there was, was one issue with a couple of incidents. And so clear skies, helping the county, finishing up our trees, moving forward on the new projects. Boy Scouts had their car show in Grochville, helping scout out this past Saturday. Talking to Mr. Reed, they had 30, 30 cars, that was the most they'd ever had. However, the Grochville wasn't as successful as it had been in Paterson. So I'm glad to hear that one thing went very well. Other than that, I'll be emailing out, trying to, or contacting you, trying to find applicable dates for our workshops. As we need to be and discuss the enterprise funding at least for that month. So if you have any suggestions, I'll be trying to work with all of y'all and try and like that. I believe that in that month, probably your best is maybe for, we're trying to have a, give us that kind of strength. It makes it easier to, that's trying to huddle around, smart board, we have the best. Other than that, unless y'all have a question for me? And so, I...
Well, I attended practically everything they did on July 4th and July 11th. Went to the Boy Scouts fundraiser. As far as I can tell, both were successful. Looked what I got from the juniors today. And I don't know, the car show, there were a few cars that the two shows had in common, but it was, it was surprising to me that, that most of the cars around here at the Boy Scouts show were not the same ones that were down here. So it was, it was a great show. And I, I'm, I'm sorry to hear the second hand of the... Where I said, you feel well? How about the food? I'm trying to remember. I believe the food, all of them, you get paid for yourself. I think it was probably food. Anyway, it was a great, you know. The fireworks on July 4th were perfect, couldn't do better. Great show. And then back in the background, we have that little lighting, something going on, you know, going on. Who breathes through there, no bugs. I guess it's a great, great show. That's all. Thanks, everybody.
Just put the public on those. Cave out, get back in. We've got a couple of activities lined up. Care to about it? Like four, four all right, sorry. Lot of good things to happen.
And I figured out one item. Prior to the vehicle, brakes and port, it would be moving up. Now it's accidentally ended yet. And they move so that people can go home before the session, they can have to come around.
I, I think that was accidental and that's my fault. And actually his report should follow departmental reports. We did those on time and then I forgot to ask. That's on me. And so I guess we'll make a motion.
How many persons to adjourn?
We have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous and we are adjourned at 9:35 PM.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.